Committee on Finance and Law will come to order, roll call vote. Ms. Donna Shavs.
Here.
Ms. Viera is present, Dr. DeMello is abstinent. First item on the agenda, procurement cards. Assistant Superintendent Monahan.
Thank you. In your packet you will see the memorandum with the updates for December charges. Every charge is listed there that was in for December, which totaled $18,600. You will see that they're color-coded by which if it's blue, they are grant-funded. Orange is schools' activity fund and red is charged to school food services. If you can see there that the majority of it at the bottom, you'll see a total by month, P card to date, and amount charges to the student activity this month was about $1,400. Amounts charged to grants is about $16,100. Amounts charged to the revolving, $146. And the amount charged to the school budget was $853. Total year-to-date, we have spent $16,000, excuse me, we have spent $79,394 on the P card.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Shavs.
I just had one question, just because I'm new and just not sure about this. Under lost textbooks, is that, I know a lot of the books have gone to eBooks, so is that, are those books that students are charged for or are those are books that are just lost over time in classrooms that do use books?
Are you talking about the P card?
No, on the page three, what is it, one, two, the third page.
We're not there yet.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So I think at this time a motion would be in order to receive and place on file.
Second.
You have to make the motion.
A motion.
The Chair seconds the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Second item on the agenda, FY '24 Quarter Two Budget Update.
Okay. So I'll go through each one specifically and then ask if there's any questions for each one, if that's okay? The first one is our appropriation of the line item budget. And again, this is quarter two, which means it goes from December, to December, the end of December 2023. So fiscally, we're in quarter two, so if you look at the amount expended at the bottom, it is about, we have expended about 35% of our budget. So again, quarter two, we're at 50% of the year, we're in line, just about the same amount as we were last year. Notice there, as we do each line, and I'm just doing this because we have new members, so I can explain, each line, you'll see the appropriation, how much we've expended up until December 31st, the balance of that line, and the percentage expended. Now, some of the budgets, as you can see, some of the lines that have been expended that are higher, some of these lines will be that, that's when we purchase the majority of the items at the beginning of the school year and justify, go a little bit lower as we go on. But there are others that we spend a little bit more per line, but again, at the end, as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, we will ask school committee to approve us to balance the lines. But as of right now, we are about 35% of the appropriation for quarter two.
Any questions from the Subcommittee on FY '24 Quarter Two Budget Updates?
I'll go to the next one. The next one for quarter two budget update is the revolving. So on the revolving, this is again through December 2023. As you will see each line for the revolving, and Mrs. Shavs, as you are asking for, for the lost books, there are some lost books that we do receive from libraries, some textbooks, so that is still considered there, so, and that has been expended through many years as that balance, so we do have some of that too. So we have the beginning balance of July 1st for each one of those revolving accounts. The beginning balance was $4.6 million. As of right now through quarter two, we've had revenue of $1.2 million. We've expensed just under $400,000. And the balance currently through December 2023, in the revolving, we have $5.5 million. Any questions with the revolving? The last one for quarter two budget is the grants update. As you can see, we have the fiscal year, and please know that we have multiple fiscal years, some grants can carry over, those are our title grants, and I can explain that to you if you want later on, for any questions that you may have. So we'll have that, we have what the name of the grant is, the grant manager, the purpose of the grant, the start date for the grant, the end date for the grant, the award amount of the entire grant, how much we've encumbered, because encumbered means what we have put aside with a PO to expend for expenditures coming up, how much we've expended, and what is the grant balance. So if you go to the bottom, where we have just a total of each of the grants, FY '22 amounts, FY '23 amounts, and FY '24 amounts. Again, you will see how much each of the grants were awarded, the encumbered, the expended, and the balance. So as of right now, using those three fiscal years, we have a grant balance of $11 million still to spend. Any questions with that?
Okay. Here and none. A motion would be in order to receive and place on file.
Motion. So moved. Thank you.
The Chair seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so, item number three, Special Education Expense and Services, see attached memo.
And that is a memo that we will provide to the Finance and Law Subcommittee, that whenever we do have any charges for legal services, and this is usually legal services for special education and student services. So currently, we have a budget of $50,000 for the fiscal year of '24. November charges, this is for the November month, we had charges of just over $3,000. Total charges year-to-date is $7,500. That leaves an amount of $42,400 left budgeted for those law, for the Lions Law Group. And again, this usually includes, and you'll see it at the bottom, includes phone calls, responding to emails from staff, drafting letters, et cetera. And again, I'll provide that every time there is a alliance on the warrant.
Any questions from the committee? Any question from any others that are interested? Here and none. Motion would be in order to receive and place on file.
So moved.
Seconded by the Chair. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So voted. Item number five, Facilities Update.
Got one more before that. Number four.
Oh, four. Quarter two ADA update, excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Monahan.
Of course. So in your packet again, this is an update that the city asks for, Kevin Scanlon, so we do produce this every quarter. And for this month, what we did was just showing what we have done for ADA requirements. And what we did here, and it was cited in the report before, that we paved a path around the Bennett Playground from the parking lot and all around the playground for students to gain access to the playground. So you see here for three different pictures of that blacktop. And also, Mr. Scanlon has asked if we could provide any updates of any projects. And what I have there is, we had Elizabeth Poles Playground was installed in October. Chamberlain East Taunton Elementary Schools will each have two new playgrounds to be installed in the spring. And lastly, Taunton High School's Tiger Tots Playground will also be installed in the spring. The next page there is part of the report, and again, this was a report that was done many years ago, and there are totals of items of what was cited in the report, the responsibility of Taunton Public Schools, and what's not part of our responsibility. And again, this is long, and I can explain it to you if you want to at another time. But again, there are two items that we have asked Kevin Scanlon to provide us an update of, because it's not cited in the report correctly, and I'm waiting to hear that so we can make sure that we have nothing left to do as Taunton Public Schools responsibility. But again, everything is in there for you to read, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Question. So I had thought that we were up to date, or we had most of our items, there were our obligation complete, are there still 38 outstanding?
No. If you look at that, the last column remaining to address by TPS is only 4.5 at the very bottom.
Okay.
So there's only 4.5, and please note that there are two that we still don't know, and we just got to figure out, and again, we've asked Mr. Scanlon to provide us. But as you can see there, that they will be addressed. See, the first one, Chamberlain, there are three left, and that will be addressed when we install the Chamberlain Playground. The other one there will be contracted. Again, things are all going to be done and addressed.
Thank you for the clarification. Much appreciated.
Of course.
Any questions from the Subcommittee? Any questions from others? Here and none. Motion would be in order to receive and place on file.
So moved.
Seconded by the Chair. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Item number five, Facilities Update.
Facilities Update is something that we provide to the committee every month by Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas. What he does as Facility Dude is the city's building maintenance software that both the school and the city staff enter any facility issues that need to be addressed. You will see attached, the Facility Dude report for currently from July 1st to July 10th, with the work orders of over 1,400 orders. Within the 1,400 work orders, Taunton Public Schools occupied just over 1,000 work orders, which is about 75% of the work orders for the city's 59 buildings. If you look on the attached chart, you will see a breakdown per school, and how many orders are open, and how many orders are closed. And again, this is provided each month by the Director of Facilities.
Ms. Shavs.
So these repairs, they don't come out of the school budget?
Not all. So what happens is anything that needs, anything that needs a repair, like, let's just say it's a broken faucet or something, that is usually, that's coming through by the city. But if there's anything that might be of damage, for whatever reason, the school department will be purchasing the items and they will fix it. Anything that's over and beyond, that needs to be done, that is something that we will pay for. But again, this stuff in the Facility Dude, majority of it is covered by the city.
Is this unusual to be this? I mean, looking at the city having 59 buildings where the schools are only 12, and we've got about 78% of the repairs.
If you think about it, how many kids we have?
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
We have a lot of population in those buildings.
So that's what it is.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Just to be clear too, and hopefully Superintendent Cabral can help me out on this, do we, are we charged for 75% indirect costs of the cost of the building department through net school spending? Is that accurate?
Yeah, so the reason why I asked Mrs. Monahan and Mark Freitas to provide us with this report is just to make sure that, one, I know in the past, there was always concerns with previous superintendents and previous school committees, that we weren't receiving the 75% of our share of the building department. So this just helps us monitor to make sure, one, that the work orders that we're filing on behalf of our schools are being completed, and also, it allows us to make sure that when we are being charged 75% for the building department, that we are getting our fair share. And Mrs. Monahan did explain correctly. In many cases, we do foot the bill for some of the supplies and for some of the repairs, but that's a working relationship that we've always hashed out with the building department, depending on where they are fiscally and where we are fiscally. Try to be good neighbors.
Any, any questions from the Subcommittee or others? Here and none. A motion would be in order to receive and place on file.
So moved.
Seconded by the Chair. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. All those opposed, ayes carry. Item number six, Bills Payable.
In front of you, you have the warrant for FY '24 for the amount of $448,932.74.
Any questions from the Subcommittee? Any questions from any others? Motion would be in order to approve the bills payable in the amount of $448,932.74.
So moved.
Chair second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed, ayes carry. Motion to adjourn. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.
Good evening, everyone. I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Thank you.
And roll call?
Yes, please. Mr. Enos?
Present.
Mrs. Shavs?
Present.
Mr. Pulowski?
Present.
Mrs. Fagans, present.
Miss Santos?
Present.
Mr. Viera?
Present.
Mr. Laura?
Present.
Viera O'Connell? Present. Approval of the minutes of January 3rd.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. And we have our Student Advisory Committee report.
My name is Natalie Duncan, and I am a representative for the Student Advisory Committee. Semester one is coming to a close at Taunton High School, with finals and midterms taking place over the next two days. We will be having early releases on Thursday and Friday for this. We would like to commend all of our students for their hard work this semester, and look forward to continued improvement in semester two, which begins on the 22nd. Also coming to an end is our winter sports season. Our teams have been doing exceptionally well this season, with some of them appearing to be bound for tournaments later in the season. This includes the girls' basketball team, who currently have an impressive record of eight to one. Before the winter break, students figured out if they were admitted into the National Honor Society. We will be holding the induction ceremony for the National Honor Society on February 1st at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. All student, all school committee members are welcome to attend and participate in the celebration of these students' successes. Students' applications for Mr. THS were submitted recently. This is a popular, student-centered, and community-bonding event that will take place on March 5th. Construction for a patio area outside the Tiger Cafe is wrapping up shortly. This will be an exciting new addition for all of those of the Taunton High School community. Outside of our cafeteria, we have the senior lounge, where seniors can sit and eat during their lunches. It is an area beloved by all members of the senior class. Mr. Holcomb is excited to expand this lounge with new furniture being implemented tomorrow. He also wishes to potentially expand the senior lounge by creating an outdoor space in the future. There will be a fast-food night on February 6th, where an outside company will come to Taunton High to answer specific questions regarding the form for student, for students and their families. Administration is working on submitting a form to the state to receive an early college designation grant. This would mean receiving a grant to provide more college credit classes at Taunton High, and would serve as a way to increase our students' potentials. Part A of this has been submitted and passed, and administration is working on part B, and that will be submitted sometime this month. The grant would cover the class and textbook costs for students. The DECA District's competition took place earlier this month. Around 40 of our students qualified for the state's competition in March by placing in the top six of their category, and even more people received many awards. We also had 15 members who finished in the top 10 of their categories. We would like to give a special thanks to the school committee for all the support they give to the program, and to advisors, Mr. McPhail and Ms. Sullivan, for all of their hard work and dedication. That is all I have for you today. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you, Natalie. That's a great report, and wishing best of luck to everyone on their finals.
When you go back to school, can you ask Mr. Holcomb and Ms. Blinow what's the status of the jukebox for the senior lounge?
The jukebox?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to accept the vote.
That sounds fun.
Second on that.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. All right. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, Natalie.
There is no public input this evening, so we will go right to E, Executive Session. If I could get a motion?
Motion to go into Executive Session.
Roll call vote.
Can you read the, can you read what's on the agenda?
Yes, may I?
Please.
Move to go into Executive Session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
Second. On a roll call.
Motion in second on a roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan? Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mrs. Shavs?
Yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Miss Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
And Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Okay. And Mayor O'Connell, I guess. Okay. Could we get a motion to come out of Executive Session?
Motion to come out of Executive Session. No votes were taken on a roll call vote.
Second that.
Motion in second. Mrs. Fagan, on a roll call, please. Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mrs. Shavs?
Yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Miss Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Connell? Yes. Thank you. Next is F, Taunton Public Schools Performing Arts Presentation by Corey Beltrum. Superintendent?
So this is one of my favorite presentations, going back to my days as a Principal Freedman, when we made some strategic changes to increase participation in performing arts. And I'm very excited about the direction that our performing arts program is heading under the guidance and strong hand and visionary leadership of Corey Beltrum. Yes, Corey, I'm talking about you. So Corey and I meet often, and he has set some very lofty goals. And what I also appreciate about Corey is that he backs his, his goals with data. And we have a lofty goal of 25% of the high school population participating in performing arts. And I have to say, through the work that we've done as a committee, by purchasing loaner instruments at the middle school level, which then trickle into the high school, little by little, that goal continues to grow. We continue to reach our goal. So Corey, you've done some outstanding work, and I give you the floor, because I think it's, it's an opportunity to share the work that we are doing and the vision for the performing arts program. So thank you, Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral, for that introduction. Am I on? Is that better? Okay. Thank you for that introduction. So, let's see. There it goes. Okay. There we go. All right. So just kind of recapping what goes on across the city with our pre-K in four, and five, six, and seventh grade general music classes. We offer general music classes, pre-K to four. We have fourth grade chorus. They operate on a six-day cycle, so you see, there's pictures of our pre-K here, and our fourth grade chorus is, so, pre-K at Letty, and our chorus, actually right here from E-Pole. Our middle school classes consist of general music in grades five, six, and seven. They're on a module system, 30-day consecutive classes. We're focusing on reading, writing, and creating music, so it's, it's like a language acquisition, but with music. And then, again, we are focused on percussion, ukulele, and piano in the middle schools, along with some more pop music and a range of things like that. So just kind of a quick overview of what goes on for general music classes. This is, these are the curriculum materials that we're using for our general music classes at the elementary level primarily. We have first steps in music, conversational solfege, and there's level one and two. So this gets into the, the reading, writing, listening, singing process of, of learning how to read and participate in music. These materials are, so first steps are intended for pre-K in one, and then conversational solfege takes over in second grade through seventh grade. It, it's more heavily used in the elementaries, but we do sprinkle it in in the middle school general music classes as well. This kind of gives you like the overview of the conversational solfege and first steps, what they, this process and how it works. So 12-step process for the conversational solfege, they go from readiness, where they're just echoing patterns, conversational, where they're decoding familiar and unfamiliar patterns with music. Then they are reading, doing the same thing, decoding, and then writing. So they're writing music notation, starting in second grade. And then for the first steps, that have that eight-step process that you see there, that happens in each individual music class. So in a 40-minute time span, those eight things are happening in the elementary level. So that's just a quick, what we're doing in the elementaries. Our performing ensembles, so we have our chorus in grades five, six, and seven, and our bands in five, six, and seven. They meet once every three days, on a three-day cycle, so they're, they're a pull-out program from the module system. So the module system is the 30-day consecutive model, where they're at either phys ed, or art, or the general music class, and every three days, they end up going to either band or chorus, if they so choose. So they have to sign up for this, this is a pull-out program. So this is our Parker Middle School chorus and band that you see at our winter concert in December. More performing ensembles, here's our Freedman chorus and our Freedman band. This was, again, from this past December. And then our Martin chorus and band. So these are just our performing groups in the middle schools so far. Going on to the high school stuff, we have our ensembles at the high school, which spans from mixed choir that starts in eighth grade, and moves on to concert choir and select choir. We have grade eight band. We have a beginner band, which is ninth through 12th graders, can sign up to take that band class. It's a one-semester band class. And the idea is to take a brand-new student who has never been in band in middle school, and start them in ninth grade, or, you know, any range of ninth through 12th grade, and then move them into the concert band so that they can participate in our full program. We have our concert band, we have our symphonic band, we have a jazz band after school, that's on Wednesday night. Our marching band is a combined ninth through 12th, so it's the concert band and the symphonic band all combined together, that's what you see on the football fields, those two bands put together. And then we have small ensembles. Some of these are student-run, some of these have an adult that run it, but there's various ensembles, you can see our range from percussion ensemble to flute choir, and then all the way over to the saxophone ensemble, which is student-led, clarinet choir, student-led. So it's various, depends on what kids are interested in, and some of them, like I said, run it themselves after school. So here's some images of our eighth and ninth grade mixed choir. Oh, the image before here was the concert choir and select chorus, but going on, we have mixed choir and select chorus. Select chorus is the premier chorus at the high school. We have the, the symphonic band at the high school, that, again, is our premier band. Here's our other bands, we have our jazz band, we have our eighth-grade band, and our concert band. Some of the numbers of enrollment, so this is starting with our middle school choruses. We, as you can see, there's some gaps in data here, when we were in a supplementary model, it wasn't a graded class. It's now a graded class, like the band classes, so now I have data in School Brains to track it. There's a spot where it says no chorus, that was our infamous shutdown, where nothing was happening. So going from, forward, I have data of enrollment. Again, these classes happen once every three days, so those are the kids that have elected to leave their arts module and go to chorus. So we're still rebuilding from the pandemic numbers here. Middle school band, we have more data on these classes because they are a graded class, so these are our numbers going forward. The no ban, that was, again, the pandemic during the shutdown, we didn't start beginners that year, so there was a dip in our numbers, because, you know, we didn't know what to expect with the pandemic, so we didn't start students where you kind of have to be in personal space to be able to show them how to put the instrument together, and how to assemble it, and how to hold it, and I'm for sure, that kind of stuff. So with the COVID shutdown, we decided not to do fifth-grade beginners that year. And you can see our forward momentum post-pandemic. And then, these are our high school numbers. So we've added in another music class this year, there's Music Eight, so it's a general So we've added in another music class this year, there's Music Eight, so it's a general music class. Eighth graders can take one semester of music class at the high school now. So that's definitely changed the total numbers, because now we're servicing 105 students in that eighth grade music class. Mr. Legardo teaches that, and he's got two sections in the fall, and then he's got two more sections in the spring. So there's 105 students total that are enrolled in Music Eight. And you can see that our, both our choruses and band have kind of had a dip here and there, and then are trying to rebound from the pandemic. Our, you can see our ninth through 12th beginner band that I mentioned earlier, we're at 21 students. It's a semester, so they could either take it in the fall or spring, so there's 21 students across the whole year that are taking that. Harmony and Theory and Guitar Class, our guitar classes has started to grow, we have 37 students in it currently, so we have two sections, a fall section and a spring section. So what Mr. Karol was mentioning earlier, 25%, I'm at 17. But that's with the Music Eight students included in. So now that they're taking a music class, I've counted those students in that whole total number. Okay, so, so some of our festivals and travels, so both the band and chorus participate in the junior and senior festival. And we also had composers, or students that are into composing, works of, of either band or chorus material, participate in that, in festivals as well. So they have, this is audition-based, it's the S-E-M-M-E-A, so the Music Educators Association, the Southern District. So we send students who, who have to practice on their own, they'll get support after school, and they audition to be in the festival. And then, some of our students, we've had two students that had Allstate rec, so they had auditioned for the junior, or sorry, they should, they auditioned for the senior district, and then had an Allstate rec. So we have two chorus students that got an Allstate rec this year, so they're going to audition for Allstate. And then, we, Mr. McKenzie takes the band to the MICA festival, so that's coming up in a couple of months. Last year, these are images of traveling to Disney. So the high school band, the concert band and the symphonic band, we traveled to Disney, and we performed at Disney Springs. So that's a picture of them at the Disney Springs, and us at the park. So that was pretty exciting. No travel this year outside of the state, we're staying local this year, we do it every other year, pretty much. Performances, so just the range of the stuff that we're doing around the, the community. We have our fall and spring performances. Lights On, we've sent several different groups to Lights On, and it keeps growing each year, it seems. The Rotary Club, they came to the high school a couple of months ago, and so the select chorus performed for them. We have our Christmas and Memorial Day Parade. Last one got rained out, so hopefully Memorial Day will be better. Our marching band performs at halftime, like I mentioned earlier. We have our All-City Band and Chorus Festival, that's coming up in March, and that's in honor of Music in Our Schools Month. We have our mentee and mentor band, so the, the high school, high school band has band council, kind of like a student council, and they've set up a mentor program. So the high school students are teaching lessons through Google Meet to the middle school students to kind of bridge that connection vertically, you know, through the program vertically. So then, at the end of the year, they'll perform with their mentee. So the mentor and the mentee, so we'll have our middle school and high school kids performing together. That was Band Camp, the picture on the bottom there, that was the mentor and mentee kids at Band Camp this past summer. And then the August Band Camp is for, or the, the high school Band Camp specifically, is for getting ready for marching season. So you see the picture of them with the marching equipment. It wouldn't be a performing art presentation without a listening example, so I have the chorus. So I'd just like to thank Steve Jakes, he does all the recordings for the, all of our concerts throughout the city, so from elementary choruses, middle school band and chorus, and the high school band and chorus concerts. We also have another Taunton connection, there is Devon Schaub's is our accompanist, he also is a nurse, so, and he's a Taunton alumni, so, and I believe related, correct? Nephew, right. Okay. So that was the concert choir and the select chorus. There it goes. So some of our equipment that we've been adding to our inventory, we've been adding more marching equipment, so some of the, the drums for marching band, sousaphone, some of those larger things that, you know, the students wouldn't buy. Typically, in other programs around, you know, in other communities, when I was growing up, you either had to buy your own instrument or rent an instrument. We're up to 388 band instruments available through, from fifth grade through 12th grade. So we're providing instruments for students that can borrow from the school system. That way, they don't have to rent or buy on their own. So that hopefully is, is providing more access to our middle school students, getting them in, into the band program, and then they can take that instrument through, up to the high school. Yes, okay. I talked about all that. Our drama program, this is Shrek the Musical, we did this back in November, so here's some just still shots from the, the show. We did as well bust the entire fifth grade to the high school, and they got to see a preview show. Shrek is closer to two and a half hours-ish. We brought the fifth grade up for an hour, they got to see a bunch of the, the musical sections throughout the, the show, they didn't get to see all the dialogue in between. We did print tickets for them, so they, we passed out tickets for them to come back with their family to see the full show. So that was a pretty, a pretty exciting experience to have the whole fifth grade up at the high school, so that was cool. Some of our recruitment, I just talked about, we bust the fifth grade up to see Shrek. Last Friday, we bust the entire fourth grade to the high school to see the select chorus and the symphonic band. In the past, when I was working at Pol and Hopewell and East Taunton, I had tried, I had brought the fourth grade to see the Rhode Island Philharmonic, and I, I'm trying to recreate that experience for our fourth graders here, but with our own high school students to see the chorus and the band. We still have kids that are in the high school now that I brought back in fourth grade, that still talk about going to the Rhode Island Philharmonic. So maybe I'll be able to do something like that again, but I wanted to bring them to the high school to see their own peers and get inspired to join band or chorus. We are going to do our tour of Taunton in the spring again, or June, actually, where the, the band directors, they go out to the elementaries and they demo all the instruments, they play the range of instruments that they could pick in middle school. We have our band council recruitment, so the high school kids are meeting virtually with the seventh graders to try and get them, this will happen in the spring again as well, trying to get them connected to the high school, so that we don't lose them in that, that, you know, moving from middle school to the high school. Our band council, like I've talked about, that's a picture of some of the students involved in band council, there's all-student-run groups, subgroups within the band council, mentoring, and then our parent-run band boosters. They're a big part of us being able to travel, they, the fundraising that they do reduces the cost overall to the, the whole group to travel for Disney or the other, you know, out-of-state places that we end up going. Some future items of interest, I want to explore some more non-performing high school electives, so things like piano, additional sections of guitar and theory, especially guitar, there's been an increase in, in student interest in that, so I'd like to expand on that potentially. Modern band would be something like, any, bring anything and everything that you can think of, and we'll put it together in a class. So not the traditional band setup, you know. In any, it could even include vocalists, so modern band could be like a rock band or something like that. Songwriting or a theater elective, because we, our theater program is after school, maybe explore some, doing something during the day and give a theater elective class. And that's a picture of some of our seniors from last year. And then, here are some of the upcoming events for the rest of the school year. We don't have our elementary ones on here just yet, we have to wait for those potential snow days that might mess the six-day cycle up, but we'll, we'll get them scheduled. So.
All right, is that?
Question.
Yeah, so thank you for that presentation. You know, the performing arts are an important part of our children's education. I just want to make sure I have the last page here. Yes, so, you know, giving them memory, creativity, discipline, motor skills, all those great things that people don't always recognize. So it's nice that we have such a robust performing arts department. One thing that we wanted to do on the city side was try to assist with increasing access to the extracurricular part of our, our performing arts. And so the city appropriated $100,000 of ARPA funds. Can you just very briefly tell us what that will help you do?
That would go towards bringing in more instruments for our middle school students to get started on. Right now, as you saw, it's 388 instruments that we have. Pretty much all of them are, have been issued out to students. So we're at capacity with loaning out instruments for the school year. So we get a few in or out based on kids moving, but that's it. And so that would go towards purchasing more instruments for our middle schools, so like flutes, clarinets, trumpets, that kind of thing, so that we can loan out to students to get started in the, in the middle schools primarily.
That's great, so more robust program in the middle schools will start happening. Wonderful, wonderful, okay. All right, thank you. You're welcome. So I'll go this way, Donna, I, Mrs. Schaub's.
Has the new schedule affected you in any way with the numbers? Because I noticed the numbers were down, is that because of the schedule or just because of interest?
It's, it's kind of a domino effect from recovering from the pandemic, so I, the schedule, I don't think has impacted us that much. It's shorter rehearsal time for the, the, some of the bigger ensembles, but they've adjusted and, and they still meet every day, so it, it really hasn't impacted too much.
Excellent. Okay. Mr. Laura?
Just a brief remark, in agreement with what the mayor said, that this program allows accessibility, more access to students who are in the sport or any other curricular activities within the school, this program allows more students to do more within the school environment.
Yeah, yeah, so like, we, we get to rehearse every single day during the school day, so the high school groups don't have a, a ton of after-school commitment, so that way they can still participate in athletics. So Mr. McKenzie and, and Mr. Legardo have tried to make sure that, that, they get to do everything.
Yeah, right. Just a question on the MICA location for this year, they, they change to different cities?
Oh, MICA?
Is that being held this year?
I don't remember off the top of my head with the location of MICA.
But they're within the state?
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were in Franklin, I think, last time, so I'll have to double-check.
Thank you.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Corey, for your presentation, I want to commend you on the work that you've been doing. I did have the opportunity with my school committee colleagues to attend the Rotary Club Christmas concert, some of the other middle school concerts, as well as Lights On and Shrek the Musical, and I think you're doing an outstanding job. I would like to see classes to the curriculum in high school, maybe acting classes, advanced acting classes. I know we've had graduate students that have gone in the field or associate field. My understanding is we've also had one that performs on Broadway, so I'm sure that it will be part of the discussion in the budget process to hopefully allocate more funds to performing arts. So thank you again for all that you do and your hard work and dedication at Taunton Public Schools.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pulowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Corey, thanks so much for the great presentation, and thank you to you and, and your whole department for everything that you do. Just wanted to give you some feedback, so my son Jack was in the band from fifth grade at Parker all the way through 12th grade at Taunhigh. He's a freshman at Providence College now, and he went out and joined the pep band, because he had the confidence, he's like, oh, he's like, I'm great at the trombone, I'll get on no problem. And now he performs at all the men's and women's basketball games and hockey games, and like, that really speaks to how well your department taught him and prepared him for that, so I just wanted to thank you so much for all that you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Superintendent Karol?
I'll try to be quick and succinct, because Corey, you just opened my mind, made me realize that we always talk about access and opportunity, but what we need to do a better job of is awareness, and you demonstrated a couple of examples about how we can bring, or help make our kids and our families aware by inviting them during school time to see the plays or to attend concerts. So that is something that we're going to add to opportunity access, we're also going to add awareness. I just also want to say, as, as a parent, and as a superintendent, but I'll speak more as a parent and a caregiver here, the culture, the safe environment that you provide the kids, not only helps them academically, I know it helps them with their mental health, and it also gives them a sense of belonging. So when people think about a 2,800-pupil high school, the culture that you have developed at Taunton High School really speaks for itself, and hearing Mr. Pulowski talk about his son, now it's a testament to what can be accomplished in that building. And as a school committee, and I can't thank the mayor enough for the, you know, the funds that she's going to allocate to the band program, now that speaks volumes about how we, how we feel about the band program by the way we invest in our kids. So thank you to everyone for the continued support. It makes the 10,000 we allocate every year seem like peanuts, but hey, we'll, we'll continue to do it, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. All right, well.
Sorry, I don't know if it made the packet, but I, so Corey is so modest as a leader, but probably sometime in the spring, once we've identified a funding source, we probably will be making an appeal to the school committee to add a second mural to Taunton High School, this one on behalf of the performing arts program.
Okay? Thank you.
All right, wonderful, well, thank you, Corey, for your presentation. Okay, we will move right to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so I'm not going to read verbatim from my report, I'm just going to provide you some key bullets. So I'm very excited to announce that we have a full-time, permanent director of technology, her name is Jennifer Ashley. Jennifer officially started with the Taunton Public Schools on January 2nd. Her responsibilities include overseeing technology in the district and implementing tech advancements for student learning and staff performance. Her previously, previous experiences include director of instructional technology and infrastructure at Dayton Rehoboth Regional School District, and various roles in Somerset and Somerset Berkeley Regional School Districts. Notable skills also include grant writing, and she also has a commitment to ensuring that all our students have access or have equitable access to technology. She holds a bachelor's in elementary education and psychology, which I also always believe it's very important to have the educational background when you're in these leadership positions, so that you know the impact that the decisions you make have on students and on our staff. And she has a master's in education with a focus on curriculum and instructional technology. She is also an active member of the school committee and a dedicated parent. So please welcome me, or help me welcome Jennifer Ashley to the Taunton Public Schools. so please welcome me or help me welcome Jennifer Ashley to the Taunton Public Schools, and we'll have her meet you at a future meeting. I'm very excited about this next update, because this is part of our work to be proactive versus reactive, so we, Taunton Public Schools is very proud to announce that we are launching anti-bullying presentations in partnership with the Bristol County District Attorney's Office. So brought, former Red Sox pitcher Brian Rose, who now works at the District Attorney's Office, will be visiting our elementary and our middle schools with a focus on grades three through seven, using a program titled Boston versus Bullies. Topics include identifying bullying and cyberbullying, understanding consequences and prevention tips, students and parents will receive an anti-bullying pledge, students will receive stickers, and every school will receive a banner that they can display in the building, so this is just part of our work to address or eradicate bullying in our schools, and I'm just going to skip to my superintendent's points, because it also continues on our theme of anti-bullying, so on January seventeenth, which was today, we had a training for all our administrators with our stu, with our special education pupil attorney, attorney Lyons, on bullying, Title IX, and also the required documentation requirements for administrators when completing bullying investigations or investigating Title IX. Also in collaboration with attorney Lyons, we had a special meeting for Taunton High School administrators with a focus on students with disabilities and the rights of their families, so again, we're trying to be proactive versus reactive when it comes to bullying and, or eradicating bullying in our schools. And then last but not least, you've heard me share some of the successes regarding our multilingual learners, our multilingual learner platforms, so we have seen math success, or math success professional development for the multilingual learners, so staff particip, staff will be participating in a four-part virtual professional development series by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and English Learner Success Forum. Focus on, the focus will be on improving math instruction for multilingual learners, participants include Assistant Superintendent Christopher Barata, directors for multilingual learners, Delilah Mendoza, and our STEM Director Elizabeth Palowski, and other educators. The series will run from January through April, starting with culturally and linguistically responsive math materials, and with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do we have a motion to?
Motion to move.
Motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted, we will move to administrative business. Superintendent, do there need to be any votes to accept any of these, or is it just informational?
The only votes that will be taken will be the field trip requests.
Okay, so we'll go through the first three, all right, staffing report, any business with that?
Motion to accept.
Well, I don't think we need to do any motions, right?
Information.
Just a typical staffing report that you receive on a monthly basis.
Okay, just if anybody had any comments or questions, the, so that's different, the Taunton Public Schools staffing update?
Yeah, the only thing I'll note on the staffing update, you recall I made a specific comment regarding Taunton High School, you'll notice that Taunton High School has seen a little movement from seven vacancies to five.
Okay, thank you, and then the Taunton Public Schools District Enrollment Update.
Typical, typical to what you've asked, I'm providing you with a monthly update on our enrollment, and if you look at the second page, the last time I provided you with enrollment was December thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three, we had eight thousand two hundred and thirty-seven students in the district, we saw a slight uptick of seven additional students, not specific to one grade, because it's typical for a district of our size to have movement throughout the year, but we, we did increase by seven, I'm sorry, we decreased, I thought that was a two, we decreased by three students, I apologize.
Question.
Mr. Laura?
Madam Mayor, the report we have to do for DESI, is that coming up soon, or will be updated total amount of students?
I believe that's due in March, correct?
The next one, yes, but I think, I don't know if you're referring to the chapter seventy numbers, which is coming out, that will be coming out with the governor's budget, so that should be happening at the end of the month.
But we had to give the DESI a report.
A report was in October.
Because I know there was, okay.
Correct, for your chapter seventy, yes.
October one in October, and then I believe in the spring, or sometime in March, and then June we get the final enrollment.
Thank you.
And then the field trip request.
Also looking for, wishes of the committee, looking for approvals to approve the Taunton High School Student Council field trip, and also a motion to approve the Martin field trip offered to grades six and seven, so for the high school field trip, all right, sorry, I can't read the writing, it's too small, but they will be, they will be going on a field trip on Friday, March sixth, and they will be returning on Friday, March eighth, and for the Martin School, the students will visit the Statue of Liberty, Ellis Island, and the World Trade Center.
Excellent, Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just have a question on the Statue of Liberty, Ellis Island, World Trade Center, it says the per pupil cost is seventy-five dollars, and then on the next page it says eighty-five dollars, is, do we know why the price changed?
We'll see clarification on the ten-dollar differential, because it, I would agree that the pricing should be equal on the application and what, and the letter that they sent home to families, but, but I would still hope that the committee would approve this, and I'll come back with the actual cost.
Pending clarification.
Second.
Motion in second, on discussion, Mrs. Shavz.
Yeah, I, my question was, when they're returning, the one from Martin, when they're returning back to the school, it says students will not have to arrange their own transportation home, does that mean they're dropping off all thirty-five students' own?
I'll get, I'll see clarification, I believe students will, usually they get dropped off at the parking lot and they are met by a parent.
That's what I thought, so that doesn't, that doesn't sound like that.
No, but we will see clarification, because I cannot imagine a bus making no house stops for thirty-five students.
Neither could I, so that's why.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second to approve, all those in.
With clarification.
With the clarifications, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted, so that was one, and now there's the, oh, there's two, oh, you did both at the same, okay, great, wonderful. All right, subcommittee reports, committee of the whole. Oh, so that's, nobody else is going to do that, or?
Well, would somebody who was on the tour of, to Hamilton Street on Monday like to give a summary, a quick summary of the tour?
I'd suggest the presiding officer who attended the tour.
You and I were both there, if you would like to add, you had some interest.
If you're going to argue, I'll do it.
No, it's, no, not an argument.
Were you there, because that might be the way to go?
I was there, if you'd like me to do it.
No, I, I don't mind just saying that, you know, I never, had never been in Coyle High School, and I, I was amazed at how, what a big building it was, it was interesting, and I just, I just have a lot of questions about how we would work this whole thing about putting kids there and what the plan is going to be, I think we have to kind of get on the same page about what we're going to be doing over there, because, because you have another school in there right now also, the Bristol community.
BCC.
And they're, they're not located in any one particular area in the building, they're kind of all over the, the place in there, so I, I think there would be some, have to be some reconfiguration, but I certainly appreciate the opportunity to have gone there, and I don't mind turning it over to Steve or to John, because you picked up on some, some questions that you had too, and there were some conversations that came up about, was he talking about even having, with the, with the water?
Oh, life safety, so.
So, all right, so are you all set then?
Yes, I'm all set.
Mr. Viera?
So just some of the discussions with Mr. Carmichael, is if it's going to be K through twelve, certain things like life safety, sprinklers need to be addressed right away, just certain ADA concerns, I know Mr. Delarussue had said that there was money for a capital improvement that was discussed yesterday at the council, I didn't get a copy of it, he said he was going to send one, but I, I just think it hasn't made it to me yet, so ninety-six hundred square feet is a lot of space to look at in, in one visit, so it is a lot to process, that's all I have to add.
Okay, and just for a little bit of clarification, we do have money appropriated for sprinklers, roof and boilers, three point two million right now, and then an additional three million in FY twenty-twenty-eight for the windows, so it's, it's in our capital improvement plan. All right, and do you wish to add anything, Superintendent?
No, I mean, this was an informational opportunity or fact-finding for our school committee members, and I, I thank those who took, who had the time, realizing that some had other commitments and could not attend, so thank you.
Just to add to that, there was, I, as I said to you, you know, I had six boys go through Taunton High School, so I can find my way around Taunton High School, but one trip in the building certainly doesn't have me, I, I was telling Mr. Viera, I said, God, I got to get back in there and kind of just orientate myself, because, I mean, even the trip down to the locker rooms was a little, you know, there's a lot of space in that building, so I mean, I could see how we could do something good with it, with the schools, but, you know, I think we have to, we really need to sit down and have a long conversation about what it is we're looking for.
Well, we were happy to arrange it, happy to answer any questions and give, you know, additional tours if necessary, so, okay, all right, next is Long Range Planning Subcommittee, Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, on Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, Long Range Planning Subcommittee met at Hope Low School, located on Monroe Streets, myself, Mr. Enos, Dr. DeMello was absent as he's away on university business, Mrs. Fagan also attended, from the administration was Superintendent Cabral, Assistant Superintendent Brendan Moynihan, and Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas. We did have an opportunity to have a visual inspection of the outside, which I, I think it's absolutely a beautiful building, I personally love the structure, it's three levels, thirty-six hundred square feet, there's sixteen classrooms, a computer room, a teaching room, and a library. You know, when I look at the building, I, you know, I think about the, the needs of the kids, the needs of the district, you know, I think having this building, overall potential needs for our student is critical, I know there's discussion about new school buildings can cost in excess of sixty to a hundred million, so, you know, I'd like to continue to assess our needs and explore future potential educational uses for the building. One thing that, that we did see when we were there, there, there was water infiltration on the third floor, so I think that's something that, you know, I don't know how, but should probably be addressed sooner rather than later to prevent further damage and to preserve the asset on behalf of the taxpayers, so that concludes my report.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted, elementary school, elementary Subcommittee, Mr. Laura?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the elementary Subcommittee met this afternoon on discussion and for the presentations of two school principals on the school improvement plans. First was Principal Pereira, Lisa Pereira, on the Edward Letting preschool, and highlighting the positive and productive school environment on working with the preschool students, stressing the collaboration necessary to make sure that these students utilize and fully understand all the technical and visual tools that are made available to them, many of the students have great challenges that the student, students and teachers work closely with to make sure that every student has met their needs in the learning environment. Again, collaboration, of teamwork, with the school focusing on two priorities, which are that all pre-care educators will have a clear understanding of grade level writing standards and demand as demonstrated through the consistent implementation of writing initiatives and the monitoring of work samples through the various means, so put down on this plan. Secondly, we had the presentation of Principal Katie DeCorter from the elementary, James Mulcahy Elementary, home of the Mustangs, who bring about respectful, responsible, kind and safe environments, and through that, the principal speaks clearly and very profoundly on how well the teams work in making sure that whatever needs are met, it's a very large school with very large enrollment, and she feels that through the collaboration of the state initiatives, the principal, the administration, the superintendent's office, working closely together, making sure that the students within that building have all of the resources, the tools, and the educational training for them to advance and excel, and that concludes my report.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted, Finance and Law Subcommittee, who would be, Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, at four, forty-five PM, Finance and Law Subcommittee, my, first item on the agenda, myself, Mrs. Shavz were present, Dr. DeMello's absent as he's away on university business, first item on the agenda was procurement cards, procurement card update and the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents was spent in the month of December, motion was made by Mrs. Shavz to receive and place on file, seconded by Mr. Viera, the motion carried. Second on the, item on the agenda was FY twenty-four quarter budget, expended approximately thirty-five percent of the budget year-to-date, which is in line with FY twenty-three dates and times. Discussion on the revolving accounts for the second quarter was also discussed, balance of five million, five hundred seventeen dollars, seven hundred and thirty-five cents. Grants update was also presented for the second quarter in the amount of eleven million, ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars, same action was taken. The third item on the agenda that was discussed was special education expenses, year-to-date amount spent was seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-six cents, the account has a balance of forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Item five was ADA update, second quarter, there's a path around Bennett that is being installed for access, several updates to playgrounds to be constructed and bring the school side in compliance with our ADA obligations, hopefully in the springtime. Facilities updates, work order from facilities through year-to-date, one hundred and ninety-four work orders comprised on behalf of Taunton Public Schools, and item six was bills payable, motion was made by Ms. Shavz, seconded by Mr. Viera to approve the bills payable in the amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, seventy-four cents, the motion carried, and then the meeting was adjourned, that concludes my report.
Move the attendance made by the chairman of the Subcommittee, along with the recommendations and motions so forth carried by the committee on the particular motions for approval of the different items.
Okay, there's the motion.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted, new business, FY twenty-five budget outlook.
So in your packet I provided you with a memo, kind of providing, kind of giving you a state of current, current affairs where we are with the governor's budget, so I believe next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, Governor Healy will release her second budget, which will be for fiscal twenty-five, and we pay close attention to the FY twenty-five Governor Healy's budget, because that will also identify the chapter seventy allocation that we can expect to receive moving forward during our budget development. Also wanted to kind of, I also wanted to emphasize to the school committee that for the last two fiscal years, we've seen inflation factors at the maximum state statute, which is four and a half percent, based on the meeting that I had with the urban superintendents group, I believe we're looking at an inflation factor of one point six three, so that, so that will reduce the chapter seventy dollars that we receive, so between the inflation factor of one point six three, and then I believe this will be the third year in which they're phasing in the Student Opportunity Act, now we'll, we'll know what we're receiving for, for chapter seventy-eight. Also, as I mentioned to the group, Mrs. Moynihan and I with Mr. Barata, we're going to be aligning our Student Opportunity Act submission with the budget development process, so this will be the second application for the next three years of the Student Opportunity Act, so my office is also working on a survey that we will administer to the public, because part of the SOA submission is to engage the public, so we will utilize a survey to do that. So again, my goal is to keep the committee up to date regarding the budget process, and as soon as we know our chapter seventy numbers, you can expect an email or a text from me letting you know what the chapter, what the chapter seventy outlook looks like for fiscal twenty. letting you know what the chapter, what the Chapter 70 outlook looks like for fiscal '25.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Motion to accept this report.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. K is unfinished business to Hamilton Street, which we have had some conversation about, but this is a summary of comments made on, from our January 3rd, 2024 meeting.
So if, I would just ask the members, because I, I would like to share this summary with the city just to make sure that all our concerns and all our potential uses that we discussed are captured in this document. And if not, please reach out to me individually, and I'll make sure that, that it gets added from the minutes or from the notes that I took with Mrs. Moynihan and Mr. Barata. So it's more for informational purposes, and let me know if something's missing.
Mr. Viera?
Just a quick question. Is there any update on any of the assessments that were requested at the last meeting?
I think it was in the packet, wasn't it?
By myself, the structural assessment.
Well, I gave the list that you had kind of ticked off to Patrick Delarussue. So I can check to see if he's working on more things, but I think there, oh, in this, there's, yeah, right. Attached to the letter, there's.
I didn't see any reports.
No, this is my, so this memo summarizes our conversation. And from this memo, I will share with the city to make sure that all our discussions regarding potential use and the assessments that we wanted completed are captured. So that when we do have the meeting, maybe some of that documentation will, will be readily available.
Thank you for the clarification. Much appreciated.
You're welcome. And I don't think we need a motion on this lot of, Mr. Laura?
Along with the discussion on that, the gentleman that oversees facilities for the, for the city of Taunton, he indicated that he's working on some of these assessments. Still, that would be part of the conversation when we have with the council members and yourself.
Okay. I, I wasn't there, so I don't know.
Right. That's, that's what I recall him mentioning to us.
Mr. Viera?
I'm just not, I don't know that he has a license or qualifications for some of those things.
Well, you don't know whether he does or not, or you, no?
No, I, I don't.
Okay. We can verify that he has a lot of licenses and qualifications?
But he did say that.
Number two is, oh, I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion on that? Okay. Number two is action item update. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have one update, which if you look at the date column, if you go to 3123, I am happy to announce that our vendor has installed the signage. And I believe the signage is covered, and we'll be meeting with our vets to schedule dedication in the spring.
Good.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Great news.
Okay. There is no press here this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.